Oh, thank you. Now, hold while you talk.
I hereby call to order the September 28th, 2023 public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. The commissioners present at this meeting are, and please, uh, call the roll call.
Ted Gamboge.
Here.
James Kloszuski.
Here.
Tom Riley.
Here.
Susan Graham.
This is an open public hearing and is being taped, recorded, and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public, media, the public, local cable, and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The number of commissioners present is four and will require a majority vote of three of those present to pass a motion. As some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are required to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public when called upon are required to state their name and address for the records so we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date. Please keep your phone or PC microphone on mute unless you are speaking to minimize background noise. Thank you.
So, we've, uh, called to order, we've done the roll call, and now, the first item on the agenda is...
Minutes, please, if you would do the minutes first, and then I'll jump into the next item.
Okay.
And hold the button down on your mic.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I move to Jim Kloszuski, I move to approve the minutes of the June 29th meeting.
Do we have a second?
Tom Riley, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commission. We do have construction work going on in the building. I apologize if any of the noise overwhelms us momentarily. This is a request for a site plan approval for a 90-unit apartment complex at Lakeview Plaza. We've provided you with some more detailed information in your packet, but I'm going to go through a quick PowerPoint presentation here. I will be able to answer any questions about the process and the requirements, and we do have a representative of the applicant here who can answer questions about the why part of it. There it goes. The site plan approval process was created as part of the city's water policy. It's something that was done in order to get a second...
With that background, could you get closer to the microphone?
Will that help? Okay. The, with the city's water policy, the city council had some concerns about approving a project for water and tying up a valuable resource without having some review by another appointed body to determine whether or not the project was a viable project. Is it something that could be done? What we get at this level of the process is something less than a full site plan that you would get at a building permit level, but it's something greater than a concept only. So, the purpose of this review is to look at the projects to see whether or not they make sense in the general layout, that they provide adequate parking, that they provide adequate access, and beyond that, most of these projects will require only staff review later for building permitting. So, most of the projects you see for site plan approvals will eventually be handled by staff and not come back to you. There are a few rare exceptions, and when those happen, we'll explain them to you as part of that process. In this particular case, the request is for an apartment complex. It's on about three acres. It's part of a commercial shopping center subdivision that was created about 20 years ago. It sits on four parcels that will be combined as part of the review process as we move forward once water's been allocated. And again, this is to verify whether our design concept that's being presented to you makes sense. The applicant's narrative describes it as three four-story buildings with 30 two-bedroom units. They are providing parking spaces at a count of 200, and I'll get into the actual site plan in just a moment and talk about some other things such as height allowance and The location of the property is in Lakeview Plaza. It is commercially zoned. Our commercial zoning allows multifamily units within it. The property is properly zoned for the proposed use, and the zoning allows the density that is being requested, the 90 units. Just a far-off aerial view to give you another look at it. So, the shopping center is located at Willow Lake and Willow Creek Road. That area has a number of commercial buildings already in place. It is intended to be commercial uses throughout. The apartment-type use is compatible with commercial uses, and often multifamily residential is used as a buffer between commercial and low-density residential, which you have to the south of this project, as a means of getting residential in there, but a residential that's not as sensitive to commercial impacts. Just a little bit of a zoomed-in view, the area's been graded flat. Additional grading will probably occur with the development of the project. And I apologize, I cannot point at things on the screen. Where it says Mogion Road, at the point where it says road, R-O, or R-D, sorry, there's a driveway entrance off Mogion that gets into the shopping center. That access goes to the central drive that connects all over the rest of the businesses. So, it's not a driveway intended for this purpose, but is a driveway that was already created for the shopping center. And the other access to the property would be from that central drive. That is a driveway and not a road. By our roadway standards, it's a private drive. Just a view of the site looking directly south towards the residential neighborhood. You can see there's some minor elevation difference that still remains. Some of that will be graded out as part of a project. But the key and the purpose for this photograph is to show you that there is a significant cut at the back of this property, and those residential homes that you can see to the south at the bottom of this page are actually significantly well above the grade level of this apartment project. The proposal is for four-story units, which would probably put two stories in view of those homes rather than a full four-story building in view of those homes. So, the difference in elevation mitigates some of the potential impact for building height.
George, would you repeat that, please?
The elevation difference because of the residential, single-family homes are at a higher elevation will mitigate some of the height impacts that you would normally get with a four-story building. The neighbors will see approximately a two-story building because of that elevation difference. The site plan itself is pretty basic. Four buildings, there's primarily squares, somewhat rectangular, but primarily a square. Access to the property is via two driveways, again, one at the central driveway at the north and one on the, if you rotate the map a little bit, it's on the east side of the parking lot, and that one leads to both the central drive and to Mogion Road. The parking count shown is 200, which is the number required by the number of units. So, we park by one parking space per bedroom plus a half a parking space per unit, up to 20, to create guest parking spaces. They meet the requirement, the calculation comes out to 200 parking spaces. The access, again, is through existing driveways and existing curb cuts onto primary roadways. The only other thing that we typically would get that we don't have a lot of detail on yet is the landscaping. Landscaping for a site like this is going to be primarily in planter islands within the parking lot and around the perimeter of the site. That landscaping area has been estimated for water usage based on acreage, but we don't have a landscape plan at this point. The landscaping requirements of the City of Prescott are that the landscape materials have to be low-water-usage materials, and there is a list that the city has adopted in the Land Development Code as well as in the water policy that lists off what plant materials are allowed. We encourage a mix of live and rock plantings for landscaping, again, for water conservation purposes, and we expect that that will be what's proposed here. They have to meet our landscape requirements prior to any building permits being issued. And again, all of the things that we're looking at today will be looked at again in more detail later as a staff review of the building permits, probably starting with an additional grading and infrastructure permit, and then construction permits for the four buildings at a later date. Once again, the purpose of this site plan review is to conceptually determine whether this is a feasible project. Could it go here? Does it meet the minimum basic requirements of access? Can it fit the parking that's required? Does it meet the zoning requirements? And then it will go to the city council with a request for water allocation. If the water allocation is approved, at that stage, design of construction drawings would occur, and at some point in the future, they would be back to the city for a permit review of the project. I gave you a list in both the staff report, and we have it here, of some of the things that we look at when we're looking at site plan reviews. This is the list that we use when we do the building permit review. So, the level of detail here is a little above what you will have at this stage. Things like sign locations and design is something that usually occurs after the rest of the site design. The same with refuse areas, the dumpster locations, for instance. Those are something that come in much later in the process. But this is the guideline we start with, and I wanted to show you the level of detail that we get into later for the site designs. Couple of key points, a few key points regarding this. I've touched on most of these. One thing I did not touch on is the building height allowance for the zoning district, the business general zoning district, is a max of 50 feet. In most cases, a four-story building will fit within that 50-foot height. Some unusual roof designs might get you up to that level or above. In this case, we're expecting a typical type of design, looking at the footprint of the building. It will likely have a flat roof with a parapet screening the mechanical equipment on the roof, very similar to this structure. And again, landscaping has to be submitted with the building permitting, it's reviewed by staff as we do that more detailed review. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions about the process, and we do have Ken Mabarak here who may be able to answer questions about the design and why this project's moving forward.
Any questions of staff?
George, could you put up the site plan again?
Certainly.
The one that shows the topographical information? Thank you. Thank you. Question, I mean, I know that we don't have construction drawings on these things, but we're showing the two apartments that are, two buildings that are to the south, and particularly the one to the southwest corner. No, that's not the southwest corner, that would be the southeast corner, correct?
Southwest corner, southwest corner. Up is north.
Okay. So, the one in the southwest corner, there's two sides of that building, and all of them are going to have that, where the first two floors appear to be buried right up against the, right up against the cut bank. Now, that's not going to work because you need to have egress from...
Any of the windows, correct.
Right, and so I'm assuming that those issues are going to be addressed, and is that something we should be thinking about now? Is that something that falls into our criteria?
It is a very, very good question to ask at this stage in the process. Our anticipation is that they will use retaining walls at the bottom of that cut slope in order to create some space for those accesses. That's not untypical of the development we see in the Prescott area, just because we have so many slopes that are dealt with. One of the things that we will make sure of is that they meet those minimum fire and building safety requirements. We can't issue a building permit without them.
Right, they all get a building permit without that.
Right. If that requires them modify the site plan significantly, we may bring them back to you for another site plan review if that's the case. Significantly, from our perspective, is that as a, a building location has changed more than a few feet, the number of parking spaces have changed, the building height has changed. Those are things we would consider substantial. Points of access changing, if they're a few feet one way or the other, no. If they're moved from one side of the property to another, that would be significant, we would bring that back to you.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess the other issue that comes up with that is, can you review once again for me the parking requirements? I know the two-bedroom unit is required to have two parking spaces per unit, correct?
Correct. It's two parking spaces, but for the first 40 units, we add a half a space to those units in order to create 20 guest parking spaces. So, our code says up to 20 guest parking spaces. So, effectively, if you have more than 40 units, at the 40th unit, that half-space requirement stops because you've reached 20 parking spaces for guests. So, max of 20 spaces. Sorry about the math lesson. I know you knew.
No, I said, no, I appreciate the math lesson. I, I think that that's interesting, but...
The idea was to create some guest parking spaces, but not, not to overwhelm a site with too many parking spaces. I think one of the things that we've recognized, at least among planners, we've recognized is that we often over-park developments, mostly commercial developments, but with residential, it's a pretty straightforward count by bedroom, and it's pretty easy for us to do that calculation.
Well, I would agree with that. So, when you talked about the significant changes in the site plan, if these buildings were to raise up in order to be able to lessen the height of a retaining wall along those property lines where the buildings are, if they were to raise up by a foot, I wouldn't care. Two feet, I really don't care. Four feet, five feet above that, yeah, I think that that starts to make, should in our motion, we have some stipulation that asks for that to come back to us if the, if the height is going to change more than, I don't know, five feet?
You can certainly do that. We've done that before. What we would do is, at the stage of building permit supplemental, pull the site plan and bring that back to you for review prior to issuance of any building permit. So, we get your re-review of it and your comments and in direction or help with us in our review. It would not be a technical review, and you would not be able to say yes or no to it, and your actions would be recommendations to staff at that stage. But we have done that before, and it has been something that, on occasion, we've brought them back to you because of changes.
Well, if there's going to be changes, and basically if we don't like those changes, it's meaningless, then bringing it back to us is, equally is meaningless.
You would be able to give us advice as to whether or not those changes are significant, and we appreciate that. We would probably bring it back anyway.
And we all know what advice is worth. So, we'll move on from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
George, we don't have a pointer, but could you go back, slides, keep going, to, you know, that pic, the photo of the...
Now, are those apartment buildings up against that bank?
Very close to that bank, yes. One of the questions that Commissioner Riley was asking about was how close in that back corner that you see there on the right, right-hand side of the, right-hand side of the picture is where one of the buildings will sit. So, all of that cut bank above that would obscure the lower level of the building, at least one floor, probably a floor and a half, and maybe two, depending on how much more excavation is necessary.
This, this cut bank, I want to tell you, this building's already happened. So, they're building the buildings into the bank?
And very close to it.
Or they're going to be putting a retaining wall there and doing something in order to be able to accommodate the...
The slope and the adjacency.
My concern, my only concern here is that buildings end up getting raised up so much as to really impact the residential neighborhood that's immediately adjacent to it. And that's, one of the things we talked about is the fact that this site is lower, and so because it's lower, it's going to have less impact on the residential, and I think that that's good.
Okay.
But if it's going to raise up too much, then I guess we'll just trust that council will take care of that?
We will, we will bring it back to you if we feel it needs to come back, if there's a significant change, if there's a significant impact to the neighbors. The neighborhood is very sensitive to what goes on there. They may actually appreciate this because right now, all of them hate ocean blue car wash because of the noise and the light associated with it, and this actually provides some buffer to them of the more commercial activity. Again, residential uses often provide a buffer between commercial activity, multifamily residential, between single-family residential and commercial activity. So, this may be a positive for that neighborhood in providing something in between.
Thank you.
Any other questions from staff?
I have a question. I'm a little bit concerned about the ingress and egress for the development. Willow Lake Road is a two-lane road. It's very busy. It's very difficult for people to get out of the neighborhood and onto the street safely with the traffic that is there. On Willow Lake Road, you've got several ingress and egress points for other businesses, so it's going to be some level of congestion in that area. Are there any plans to have lights, or how is that going to be managed and handled to make it safer?
So, the design of the shopping center originally included various turn lanes, set aside on Willow Creek Road. Primary traffic in, I guess impacts are on Willow Creek Road. I am not aware of any plans to modify the signals. We have a signal at Willow Lake and Willow Creek Road. Putting them too close together is bad traffic management. It causes backups through intersections. So, I don't anticipate any additional signals. The project and its, its access points were all designed under the assumption that the entire center would be some combination of retail, or restaurants, or other types of businesses, all of which have a relatively high volume of, of traffic turnover. The impacts from residential occur typically in the morning at a particular timeframe, and then in the afternoon at a typical timeframe. Those timeframes are irrespective of whatever impacts the commercial has in the area. We have looked at it, we will look at it again with the building permit review through our traffic engineering department. They're part of the review process. I do not anticipate any additional impacts beyond what was designed for, for the shopping center.
So, George, you can access that property from either Willow Creek or Willow Lake, right?
For this particular site, there are two ways to get to it from Willow Lake Road. One is into the shopping center, one is via Mogion, and then into the shopping center. From Willow Creek Road, there are three driveway entrances, two of which have deceleration lanes, a right-turn lane for you to get out of the traffic, to get into. It's well-designed for traffic access.
Yeah, when I, I travel Willow Lake Road quite a bit, and I'm increasingly seeing people take a lot of risk in order to make a left-hand turn onto Willow Lake Road, and that is a real concern of mine.
That is something that we keep an eye on as far as allowances go. It's not out of the question to make no left turn limitations if we have a lot of traffic accidents. I don't believe that has occurred. Congestion in the area is heavy. It's a commercial area. There are two very large commercial shopping centers right there. That's something that traffic engineering designs into the roadway network when they're looking at it. So, that is something we look at all the time, and if we see something going on, traffic engineering will take steps to mitigate those, those dangers. Mr. Chairman?
If there's no further questions of staff...
I do have another question, Mr. Chairman, sorry. Has the neighborhood off of Montana, Montagna, has that, has the neighborhood been notified of this particular project yet?
No.
Not yet?
No. If it is a project by right, by our code, we don't notify neighbors because all it does is create an expectation that they can influence something that's allowed by right.
I get that. I guess the reality is going to be is that to make a left-hand turn onto Willow Creek Road, people are going to end up going over to Montagna Drive down to the light.
They may, yes.
Making that, so that neighborhood's going to get a little bit of an impact to it. At least, that's what I would do if I was living there.
No further questions of staff? Do you want to hear from the developer?
It's up to you. Do you have questions for the representative for the property owner?
Any questions?
Apparently not.
I just want to go, Jim Kloszuski, I want to go on record that I agree about the concern about getting out onto Willow Lake Road. I drive that frequently, too, and it's getting worse without adding more traffic to it. So, I just want to go on record for that.
Good morning, and I'm going to take you back in time. My name's Ken Mabarak, I'm the developer of this site. But I'm going to take you back in time about 35 years and point you to the apartments on the left of that parcel there, the Lakeview Apartments. We built that in 1987 with the concept of that, the driveway to the apartments off of Willow Creek Road was always designed as a joint-use driveway between the apartments, 72 units over there, and this land here, which would, had always been anticipated as a shopping center. We had Bash's Grocery Store look at us. Oof, I don't know. Were you even here then?
I wasn't when they were there.
And they...
1999.
Was it 99?
Yeah.
So, they came, and the site before we got involved was very hilly. That back southeast, southwest corner that you see there in the red is a 30-foot cut from the very corner down to where the flat land is. There you go. The applicant of any, or the user of any of this parcel would probably change the grading that you're looking at right there. I think this, this photo looks like it was taken from in front of the car wash, looking south.
Yes.
So, you have, you can see that tier in there. We just stopped grading that parcel because it was all high up there to that height, and that created a lot of concerns for the neighborhood, understandably. So, we just stopped grading. That grading may even go down a bit from what you're seeing here, might go down to that level, that first level you're seeing. But George, if you could put that overview back up, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
No.
So, what we have here is, and we sub, we, we recorded a subdivision on this property in, 2007, George, someplace in...
Six or seven.
So, it's been, that corner's been a lifetime for me. When we built the apartments, it took the city about a year to put a stop sign on Willow Creek Road at the driveway for the apartments, and that was because there was just no traffic on Willow Creek Road. I think the traffic count on Willow Creek Road at that time was mainly people going from this area to Embry-Riddle. There just wasn't a lot of north-south traffic, maybe a couple thousand cars a day. Willow Creek is now at about 40,000 cars a day, which is pretty profound. Our community is limited. We only have two north-south streets in our community that function. That's 89 and Willow Creek Road. So, it makes sense that we're building all of our new homes north of here, that Willow Creek Road is going to be much more intense as time goes on. It'll probably equate to what we now see on Highway 69 over at Gateway Mall and that, that area there, where we're expanding it to eight lanes, or whatever we're doing, I don't know what we're doing. The reason we're here today is not so much for this apartment complex, which obviously will change. Mr. Riley nailed it when he looked at that building in the corner. What we wanted to present to you today, because when this project was started, there was no water policy. There was water law, and that's what we complied with in this project. We brought water into this project from two sources, one from a high-pressure line at Mogion, the other one from the line that was over at the apartment. Mogion, the other one from the line that was over at the apartments. I don't anticipate 90 units on this property. I do anticipate the design changing dramatically. The problem we have today is that we're now assumably bound by this policy for water. We think we have water rights. What I'm running into in the public world is developers, buyers, builders want to know if, before they start going into this process, they want to know if the project is feasible. I think what we're walking into here is a water thing. I don't expect 90 units. That's too dense. I've been an apartment guy despite developing this site. My whole career in commercial real estate was with multifamily. So I just don't see that site laying out well for the maximum density that you see here. But what we have to have is the ability to move forward and in some period, less than a year or two, from the time someone gets interested in a parcel to making it happen. So what we're trying to do is, and I'll build apartments here if my wife would let me. I don't think she will. We want to get started on this. I want to be able to talk to people about it. We've had two apartment people come to us to build luxury units there. And not so much for the Embry-Riddle crowd, which we loved. When I had Lakeview Apartments, which is 72 units, we loved the students. They were great. And we put in their lease, talk about parking, one student to a one-bedroom, two to a two. And we'll call your parents if you bring a roommate in. And we did. And the parents were just great. Nope, we're sending them to Embry-Riddle. Tell that guy to get out of my daughter's apartment. So we were really great with Embry-Riddle and love those people. This might be some Embry-Riddle, but I don't see this center being so much for Embry-Riddle, although I could be wrong on that one. I see this one being for someplace where we have some underground parking or underbuilding parking and just making it a grand place. We developed the center here, starting in 2014, we started moving land, 2013, we started moving land. And I think what we brought to our community, I'm very proud of this corner, having been out there since I had more hair and it was black. I know the history out in that whole area pretty darn well. And we're very proud that we've brought four publicly traded companies to our corner and four international companies. It's not something that's easy to do in Prescott. As you know, we've lost many of our retailers. We lost Sears and World Market and a bunch of the other. So, but this corner is the reason it's got popular. It's the right location at the right time. We want to see something here. I would prefer that we saw AJ's coming here or a great restaurant. It'd be great for, we would prefer that. They're not coming. We've, we've talked to every restaurant company in the country and many of them are now scaling back. I know Charleston's is going away. Applebee's is closing a bunch of locations. The restaurant industry is changing and we have not been able to get the ear of anybody for a restaurant. I took, God, I drew a blank on his name, Murphy's Patterson, Peterson, who owns the Murphy's and the grill and the office. And I said, Mark, why don't you come out, why don't you put a restaurant up here? What the area needs is an office north or a grill north. It needs a place where the businesses around there can go to lunch, stop off after work before, to decompress, as we used to call it. So we've been trying everything to get other attractions to this center. Desert Financial Credit Union, who has the parcel on Willow Lake Road, is presumably going to start construction again. They had a fight with their contractor, almost unprecedented. They stopped construction with the building about 20% completed. And we've been dealing with them for quite some time. So what I see at Lakeview Plaza is something that can, it has to have the ability to change into different things because we don't know what tomorrow's going to bring for that area. We don't know what the market's going to bring. And the market will determine what goes here. If we can't get retailers, which we have not been able to for a parcel this size to date, apartments is a great use for this parcel. It's well-needed in that area. We like the fact that there's a 30 or 35-foot buffer between this parcel and Mogion Road. We're very sensitive to those owners in the cul-de-sac there. I've talked with all of them. There was only one person who was really nasty in this whole subdivision for all these 10 years, and that person has moved. These people over here, we're very considerate for, and we've, they've called the car wash. Car wash people are great people. They'll, they'll do what they can in there. And the neighbors have been happy, at least I thought they were with, the ones who communicated with the car wash. So what I'm trying to say to you is, Tom, you're right about that building. It's going to move. Whether it comes back to you or not is fine. We don't, we're fine with coming back to the process here. I think it's important. We just need to be able to move ahead. The process today in the commercial real estate world takes forever. And that can kill the deals, especially when you have uncertain times like we're facing here. So what we're trying to do is poise the property so that somebody coming in, spending a lot of money to try and see if they want to be here, doesn't get tripped up over a basic, which is that being water. So we came in, and I'm just being forthright with you here, we came in and asked for the highest number of apartments that could be put on this site, just solely so that we can move ahead in what's one of the few retail centers we have, sales tax generating centers, so we can move ahead and not have to worry about getting tripped up a year down the line, nine months down the line with somebody else. Tom, I know you understand that one better than anybody. In reference to traffic, which is really a great question, when we first developed this site, the intention was to leave this parcel, those four parcels you see in red there, we had left that standing higher. We hadn't, the initial plans didn't call for bringing it down to grade. Access would have come from Mogion. So there would have been another access right across from that cul-de-sac you see on the south side of the houses. That created a real issue once we started doing that and in the fact that the rock here is not very pretty. And we would have been facing unattractive things along what's now called Lakeview Plaza Lane, the internal street and the other side. So we elected to take it down. And that way, we had the ugly parts in the corner. And that's why Michael Taylor's company designed the buildings in that corner because they want to mask what the corner was there. But traffic has always been a concern. So we had an entrance there in addition to the other six entrances to the site that we have. The mission at the, at the time with the staff, Tom Geis was here, as I say, I don't know if you were here. And Tom said, let's get as many points of ingress and egress as we can because we all have the flexibility. And we did just that. We have three of them on Willow Creek Road. We still have two. There's another entrance to Mogion from Desert Financial Credit Union when they build there, plus this one here. So what I, what I want to do is move ahead with the project. I don't want to get into a battle with the city over water. A policy has come in place after this subdivision was developed. We didn't have a water policy or didn't need water agreements at the time we did this. And in the middle, when you take a project like this in a smaller community that doesn't fill up quite as quickly, it's tough to change the rules on people right in the middle of the deal. So we want to comply. I anticipate this will always come back to the city. The traffic thing is Ian Mattingly. Ian Mattingly is working on some issues because the points you made, Ms. Graham, is, are quite valid. It's getting difficult there. One of the reasons we put these entrances onto Mogion was just what Mr. Riley referred to, take out, go out that way, onto Montaña and exit through the, through the lights. Give you some background, which doesn't matter, but it does to me. We came to the city after we built the Lakeview Apartments, the 72 units there, and there was nothing. The only thing on Montaña was the condominiums to the west and the south. That strip of houses between the apartments and Montaña wasn't there. We went to the city and said, let's change that to multifamily and I'll, I'll build some more apartments out there rather than those nine or 10 houses on Montaña. And they said, oh my gosh, no. So, so they got sold off as a single family. So that single family probably shouldn't ever have been in that particular site. But Ian's working on some things. I don't know what's going to happen. I know there's talk about Willow Creek and Willow Lake intersection. The, the issue you present is valid, and I think the city is working on that right now. And I don't know that how that would impact, I don't, you know, we're at 40,000 cars a day. This, this apartment complex, if this ever happens, has much more ingress and egress than the Willow Creek Apartments right down the street that only has the one point of entrance into Willow Creek Road. I was on the commission, planning commission at the time that we approved that, and that was the major, major issue, was the one point of ingress and egress that they had for that 160?
143.
Forty, 150, 160 units up there. So we think we've really helped design something that's more gracious, more glamorous, easy to get into, easy to get out to. We, one of the reasons we took this on Willow Creek Road before this got graded, the land was about 12 feet higher than Willow Creek Road. We insisted with our engineers that when they come, when people come into the center, they come in flat rather than one of these things, like as you see over at Frontier Village. So we're excited about the center with, I'm glad, I feel like we've really contributed something great to the city. We've got some wonderful retailers. Those parking lots are all full. I think we have to be careful that we don't circumvent something that can go in here just because we're starting to begin a process here. The process is always going to be a long one. And what we can't do today is attract people to come to our community for retail, sales tax issues and make it a year and a half to two and a half year process to find out. People aren't doing that. They'll, they'll build another something in Phoenix, which is great. I mean, I'm, I've been in the real estate business all my life and I'm thinking, how do we shut the door behind us here in Prescott? It's always been an issue. It's always been, was my concern when I sat where you guys sit. We got to do something because we only have these two north-south streets. But what we don't, I think, do is take a parcel that's been in process for 20 years and handcuff it so it can't complete. I think that's the issue, bottom line here, however you want to handle it from there, George. But that's, that's the intention here. Let's, let me move ahead. I only, after this, we got one other parcel. It's a 60,000 square foot parcel. I'd love to get the restaurant into that one. Restaurant won't go, won't go here. So anyway, any questions for me?
Yeah. Any questions for the developer, Ken Maberek?
Did I address your, your questions, Ms. Graham? Somewhat.
So I mean, obviously I still have a concern. George, are, is there any possibility or ability to expand Willow Lake Road to four lanes?
The right-of-way there is wide enough. A portion of that right-of-way could accommodate additional lanes. There's some significant engineering that would be required to figure out for sure whether that's possible, and I don't believe that has been done. So I don't think that's in the forecast for us to widen it to four lanes.
George, could you go to the last slide?
The previous slide? Or the very last slide?
The very last.
So that will be our motion.
If I can put this in layman's language, I think you're asking us to set aside our standard planning review process of, that we normally do and look at this, does it make sense, answer the basic question, does it make sense to put some apartments there so that we, Ken knows he can get water and then we'll, it'll be refined later? So we're not look, we're not doing our conventional planning commission review.
It is, it's significantly different than what you usually see with your subdivision plats. Most of the projects that come before you are either rezoning or subdivision plat. And a lot more information is available at the stage that you get it than we have for this type of site plan review. So it is different, yes. The idea here is that conceptually, this project could be feasible at this scale, at this location. And that's what council's looking for. They need to know that they're not going to allocate water to something that's just a no-go out the gate. And if you say, this is not a no-go out the gate, but it needs a lot more review, and even if, as was mentioned by Commissioner Riley, you say, we recommend that it come back to us, this commission, I think you're still accomplishing what council's looking for, which is that someone else has looked at it and said, this is not a waste of water to consider moving this forward in the process.
With that in mind, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with your assessment. I think that it's, you know, the, the fact that you want to put apartments in that area, for us to say, yeah, move it forward, continue the conversation, it's worth continuing the conversation. If there is significant review, changes, I think it should come back to us for review. And having said that, I will move to recommend approval of SITE, Site 23-007, site plan approval of 90-unit apartments at Lakeview Plaza.
Do we have a second?
Jim Kloszuski, I second the motion.
Well then, Sarah, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Gamboji.
Approve.
Commissioner Kloszuski.
Approve.
Commissioner Riley.
Approve.
Commissioner Graham.
Approve.
Passes 4-0.
Okay, we'll get the next item up. This again is a site plan review, very similar circumstances and basis for it as the one we just talked about. This is for a site planned for a hotel, however, rather than a residential use. And it's at Gateway Mall. It is going to be on a three-acre parcel that has not yet been created. It will be subdivided out of a larger parcel that's there. And it is for a hotel with 107 rooms. There is a slight possibility of 110. The information they provided to me had both numbers in it, but 107 seems to be the number they landed on. One of the interesting parts of this process is being able to see ahead of time what types of uses may occur at a property and why those uses may occur at a property. In this case, they're proposing a three-story hotel. They're proposing to place it in close proximity to the former Sears site that is now East buyer sports. And it is tied somewhat to East buyer sports. The owner of East buyer sports is subdividing out three acres of property for the hotel to develop on. And they anticipate that some of the tournaments they're, they're proposing there will help fill the hotel. The two will be, will have some synergy. Had to use that word today for some reason. The project itself is located in an area that is the old Sears parking lot. Again, for shopping centers and especially the old internal malls, we overparked considerably the amount of parking spaces. They were designed with parking in mind for the week before Christmas. And the rest of the year, the parking lot's half-empty. In this particular case, East buyer's parking demand is significantly different than what Sears had in, at the time they operated. And the additional hotel use and the reduction of parking that's associated with it should still meet all of our parking requirements for both businesses, both East buyer and for the hotel. One of the conditions the hotel has, and it's not uncommon for hotels, is that their site has to have sufficient parking to meet their parking requirements. And as you'll see as we get a little further in, just a little bit better view of where it's going to be. The three acres will come out of the parking lot. The hotel will end up located within it approximately running north-south, approximately, with access from the internal driveway. Again, this is the mall shopping center site. There's no external connection directly to. There's no external connection directly to any of the publicly owned streets around it, so you have to get onto the mall site to get to the hotel. And you have to be in close proximity to East Byer Sports to get to the hotel. So this is rotated somewhat. To the right is north, so it's been rotated so the hotel, you can see it's more or less parallel to the front of the automotive section of the old Sears building. It has sufficient parking within its property boundaries to meet the hotel requirement, which is a little bit less than for apartments. A hotel requires one parking space per room, plus some additional parking spaces for the largest staffing shift. So they provided us with sufficient parking. The hotel does propose to have a swimming pool, and it is proposed to be four, four levels of units within the building. And there's a rendering to give you that idea. Excuse me?
You said four levels of?
Of guest rooms. So four stories of guest rooms. This site is the same zoning as we talked about previously. The requirement of 50-foot maximum building height applies in this location. Just based on scaling this building, not from that drawing, that drawing is only scaled horizontally for some reason, it will be at, under the 50 feet. Another render is just to give you an idea of what it would look like. And then, again, the same list of things that we look at for the final building permit review that planning staff will do. Some of these items are also reviewed by other departments. You'll notice fire hydrant locations and refuse areas and things like that are also reviewed by the fire department and by the building department and, of course, by our public works department. In this particular case, they're providing exactly the required amount of parking spaces. They meet the setback requirements for the building, for the business general zoning. That property has a maximum height allowance of 50 feet. The building that they are showing us is below that. In this particular circumstance, these folks are a little further along than for the previous one we looked at. They actually have approximately 30% drawings for the construction drawings that we've seen. So we know in more detail about height of the building than we did at the previous one. It is not a conference center hotel. That's important to point out, primarily for parking purposes. The parking demand is strictly going to be generated by the number of rooms. Conferences, different story. Now you have other parking demand that we have to build into the project. Again, similar to the last one, landscaping plans are something we generally don't get detailed levels until further into the process at the stage of building permit. And the similar recommended motion, again, this process is exactly as we talked about before. The concept is, is this feasible in this location? And I'm going to pop back to the site plan in case you have questions about that. And with that, I am...
Questions of George? George, I have a question.
Certainly.
Didn't we get a proposal some time ago to build housing on that space? If you go, see, there's the hotel premises and to the southeast of that, or southwest of that, northwest of that, didn't we have a proposal to build homes in that space?
We had a proposal from East Byer at the time that they first came in that included some residential uses on the area to the south, slightly southwest of the location of the hotel. They were to be rental units, but in a form of like fourplexes. I believe this is a replacement of that. I do not believe they still have that desire based on conversations with East Byer's owner. So rather than build their own residential, they have a hotel, excuse me, their own units, they have a hotel that would go in place of it and be managed by the hotel company, the Wingate.
So just to be clear, this hotel replaces that proposal?
I believe that is the plan at the moment. If it changes, we will be back to see you with a revised site plan for East Byer. They were going to manage their rental units, short-term rental or hotel-type use rental themselves on their own property, but I believe this is the current plan and it allows a professional hotelier to operate it.
So I didn't realize that we're replacing that with this.
It may not be a direct replacement, but yes.
Was there a water allocation made?
No.
The previous one?
It was a conceptual idea, never ended up being in process.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do they have enough, or do they own enough land around that area to put in their own rental units if they chose to do so in addition to the hotel?
They do own enough property that they may be able to get some additional units in. They are, by taking this area out, this three acres out of their parcel, they're eliminating parking spaces that, at a rate that it's getting close to the point where they need the remaining parking spaces. I don't anticipate additional units being proposed based on the number of parking spaces they have and the demand they seem to need for those parking spaces. So possibility, yes. Probability, I think, no.
So if you could go to the motion page, please. Any other questions of staff? The developer is not here.
No, I apologize for that. We had some confusion. They were invited to the last meeting, and I thought they were going to be at this meeting.
So we're, much like the last proposal, we can set aside our conventional planning commission analysis, and we're asking the question, does it make sense to put a hotel there to get water?
For that hotel, yes.
Therefore, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend, Tom Riley, I move to recommend Site 23-008, site plan approval of a 107-room hotel at Gateway Mall.
Do we have a second?
Susan Graham, a second.
Okay, Sarah, call the vote.
Commissioner Gamboji?
Approve.
Commissioner Kloszuski?
Approve.
Commissioner Riley?
Approve.
Commissioner Graham?
Approve.
Passes 4-0.
Any staff reports?
The only thing I can tell you is we have a number of items coming up for your next regularly scheduled meeting. Look for an agenda coming out sometime next week for that.
If there's no else, this, nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.